Microphone check, one, two.
Good evening and welcome to this council meeting on Thursday, October 16th. Madam Clerk, please call the rule. Council President Miller.
Present.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderebwa is absent. Majority Leader Espinal. Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Present.
Councilwoman Graves.
Present.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Present.
Councilwoman Peterson. Council President Pro Tem Por Pichardo is absent. Councilor Royas.
Present.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Majority Whip Sanchez.
Present.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas. Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Present.
You have 11 present and three absent. You have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, the invocation will be given by Councilman John Goncalves. Will everyone please rise, including our guests?
Today we gather in gratitude for the city we call home, Providence. A place of resilience and diversity and hope. And in these challenging times, when uncertainty tests our patience and hardship weighs heavy on so many of our hearts, we ask for your strength and guidance. Bless the people of Providence, from Fox Point to Federal Hill to Valley, from Mount Hope, to the South Side of Providence, our entire city, every family, every worker, every elder, every child who makes the city the vibrant city we all love. And grant wisdom to our leaders tonight and compassion to our neighbors. It reminds us that progress is not built by one voice alone, but by the chorus of many working together in faith, humility, and courage. Help us meet division with dialogue, struggle with solidarity, and fear with love. May we care for our most vulnerable neighbors, our most marginalized neighbors amongst us, the unhoused, the sick, the unemployed, and the unheard and the unseen. And build a community where every person is valued and uplifted. Let Providence live up to its name, a city guided by divine care, by the strength of its people, and by the belief that better days are not behind us, but ahead. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Goncalves. Madam Clerk, please note that President Pro Tem Pichardo is present. So noted. And this evening, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Althea Graves.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Madam Clerk, please note Councilwoman Anderebwa is present. So noted. Thank you. Item three.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item three? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes. Item four.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of item four and five.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items four or five? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes. Madam Clerk, please note item four as received, item five as received. Item six.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of item six, substitute and pass for the second time on a roll call.
I'm sorry, Majority Leader.
And lay it on the table.
Yes.
Pardon me.
Second, Madam President.
So that was a motion to waive the reading of item six and lay it on the table. And seconded, any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Vargas.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to everybody who's working these ordinance to lay in the table, I'm sorry. Because we don't have technology yet. It's a good time to lay it down and start working how we can make it better and work for the constituents that are asking for these type of machines. Those are batteries. But we don't have the technology yet and we're not ready yet. My, I'm sure my constituents and my landscaping people is going to be very happy today because we've taken another step how to help everybody. And that's the reason I want to say thank you to the colleague to lay it on the table.
Thank you. Further discussion on item six? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes. Item seven.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of item seven.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item seven? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item seven to the Committee on Finance. So noted. Thank you. Item eight.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of item eight through 11, pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items eight through 11? Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I rise in strong support of all four of these resolutions, but I want to speak on item nine, if I may. Item nine is a resolution ensuring safe and accessible court proceedings. So this is a great example to point out what occurred in the past 10 days or so. So as most of you are aware, we had an ordinance, committee hearing, public hearing here last Monday, I believe, and dozens and dozens of people came and testified on a specific ordinance that is later on the agenda. But something that we kept hearing over and over from a lot of the people that provided testimony, I'm sure there's a lot that are here today as well to support those ordinance, that ordinance later in the agenda, is a major thing that's happening in our city right now. And that is ICE detentions happening outside of court facilities here in Providence, specifically District Court. So while we acknowledge that we don't have direct oversight of District Court, we do have direct oversight over Municipal Court. So what this does in this ordinance, it directs kindly asked collaboratively working with our Municipal Court to hold virtual proceedings, hearings, if the clients or the people that have those hearings wish to do. This isn't something that requires a lot of technology, a lot of investment, because I'm sure you're all aware, a couple years ago, there was a significant pandemic. And that's how courts proceeded to work through those challenges is to offer virtual hearings. So not only are we asking kindly and urging our state leaders to offer virtual court hearings at District and Superior Court, but we're also leading by example. This is something we should all be extremely proud of, that we're not following anyone where we're leading by directing our Municipal Court to offer virtual hearings if constituents wish, while at the same time asking and urging the state to do so at the state level. Because that's where we're seeing most detentions here in Providence is outside of District Court. We shouldn't penalize people that are going to court to take care of their matters. A lot of them in District Court are minor infractions, and you know, they're trying to do the right thing by goring the court and taking care of those matters through the justice system that we have currently established in the city and the state. But what we're seeing is a lot of families being torn apart, a lot of trauma, a lot of chaos. Definitely would like to highlight and uplift the support networks that are responding to certain cases outside of District Court mostly. So while there is, you know, that support, the main core issue is that there is an alternative to not even be in that position. And hopefully those support networks can support residents in other parts of our city. So that's what item number nine does. Today I rise in strong support, want to give a lot of gratitude and recommendation or acknowledgement to all of the people that provided testimony and just show as an example that sometimes it feels defeating coming to public spaces and voicing your opinion. Sometimes you don't see a lot of action, but this is a prime example of people participating in the public process and us elected officials listening to our constituents. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we, when we close the discussion, I'm going to ask the clerk to read item 11. But first, is there further discussion on items eight through 11? President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam President. To you and through you, I rise also in support of this resolution. As has been said before, the city of Providence, state of Rhode Island, has always been an immigrant community, and particularly for all of us descendants of African and Europeans. I think that what we see in the YouTube videos or throughout our nation is blended families being separated, whether there is a father that is here undocumented, a mother with children in the schools. We see it nationally, but it has hit home. And it's affecting our quality of life for them, but for us, impacting those children, impacting their education. And so we, here in the city of Providence, through the leadership of this city council, continues to ensure that we take local action. I know that at the federal level, we have continued for decades calling on for immigration reform. 20, 30 years later, nothing has happened. Under this current administration, this city and this state is as blue as blue. We are in the eye of the storm. And so we continue and we must continue to be compassionate. We need to see at the local level how our families are being impacted. And as an immigrant and as a legislator, it is our job to make the hard decisions, to ensure that the, our families, especially our blended families, continue to be protected. Those produce that you're going to the grocery stores, shopping, those produce are going to be more costly for all of us, including here in New England. When you go out there apple picking, those who are working the farms at the national level and even locally, we're impacting. Those produce are going to continue to increase. So therefore, I commend you, President, for putting this resolution forward along with my colleagues, and I support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, items eight through 11. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please read item 11? Whereas federal immigration enforcement has increasingly occurred in and around courthouses across the United States, including in Rhode Island state courts such as at the Garahie Judicial Complex. And whereas.
Excuse me, Madam President. I think the request was to read item 11, not nine.
Correct.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. You were reading so lovely.
You were reading item nine, yes. That is correct.
Sorry. Thank you.
My apologies. Whereas Eric J. Ritchie, DMD, is a second-generation dentist operating a family-owned practice with a lengthy history of care to the residents of the Fifth Ward of Providence. And whereas Dr. Ritchie, a Rhode Island College graduate alumnus, has been recognized by Rhode Island Monthly Magazine as a top dentist every year since 2020. And whereas Dr. Ritchie is a fellow of the Pierre Fochard Society and an esteemed member of the Rhode Island Dental Association, the American Dental Association, and the International Dental Fraternity Delta Sigma Delta. And whereas emblematic of his care for his fellow Rhode Islanders, Dr. Ritchie has been an annual volunteer for the Rhode Island Mission of Mercy Dental Clinic. And whereas in recognition of his skill in and commitment to dentistry, Dr. Ritchie was appointed by former Rhode Island Senate President Dominic Ruggiero to the Health Services Council and by Governor Daniel J. McKee to the Rhode Island Department of Health Board of Examiners in Dentistry. And whereas the Providence City Council wishes to convey its sincere gratitude for the work of Dr. Ritchie, his practice, and of all working diligently in health professions across Providence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council congratulates Dr. Eric J. Ritchie for his considerable success in and service to dentistry in Providence and in Rhode Island. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to Dr. Eric J. Ritchie and to the Rhode Island Department of Health. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion? We've had another request, Madam Clerk. If you could please read item 10 into the record, and I have it for you. You're welcome. Whereas the Providence City Council acknowledges that it stands on the traditional homelands of the Narragansett and Pocahontas tribal nations known historically as Maswacusset and Mochassac. And whereas the Narragansett and Pocahontas are the first peoples and ancestral inhabitants of these lands whose presence long predates the founding of Providence and continues today. And whereas the city council also recognizes the Nipmuck, Niantic, and Manisiyan tribal nations as indigenous peoples to the region known as Rhode Island. And whereas the Narragansett and Pocahontas were not only the first people to call Providence home, but also the first to establish systems of governance, trade, and community grounded in respect and coexistence, shaping the cultural and political foundations of this country. And whereas despite centuries of displacement and marginalization, the Narragansett, Pocahontas, Nipmuck, Niantic, and Manisiyan nations continue to maintain their traditions, leadership, and active presence in Providence and across Rhode Island. And whereas, as we work collectively to create a better and brighter future for all members of the Providence community, we acknowledge the original inhabitants of these lands and their lasting contributions to the city's identity and history. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Providence expresses its deep respect and gratitude to the Narragansett, Pocahontas, Nipmuck, Niantic, and Manisiyan tribal nations as the first peoples of these lands. And be it further resolved that the city council reaffirms its commitment to collaboration with indigenous communities and to advancing inclusion, understanding, and equity for all residents of the city of Providence. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Further discussion on items eight through 11? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes. Counselors, at this point, I would like to ask the Pro Tem Pichardo to chair item 12 so that I can participate in the discussion.
Thank you. Item 12.
Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of item 12, substitute and pass for the first time on a roll call vote, as amended.
Second, Mr. President.
There is a second. Any further discussion?
President Pro Tem.
Come to President Miller.
Thank you very much, sir. I rise for two reasons. One, the first, I'm just going to share with all, everyone briefly, the technical amendments that were made. They are minor and only made to section I three, which is on page seven of what is before you. So this is the section that newly creates the right for organizations to bring suit in the CPRA. The only change that was made was to make explicitly clear, added the words "but not compensatory or other monetary damages" to the sentence, "may seek appropriate relief in civil action for injunctive and declaratory relief." And then we also are striking section B from that same I three section, which is an organization having the right to sue law enforcement officers independently. So everything that was in the CPRA originally in 2017 stays for individual right to sue. We just wanted to clarify. So that's the technical amendment. We could ask the solicitor if there's any further clarification you would like to make on that. Okay. And if I may, I would just like to share, you know, two things. One, why we made the amendments, but really, what is at root in the amendments to the CPRA that are before us? So I want to thank everyone on the ordinance committee for spending the time long into the night, 10 days ago, I believe, a week from Monday, and everyone who's here tonight who was part of that conversation. We were here till nearly 10:00 PM. We heard a community member after community member testify in favor of the changes to the CPRA. And what, the reason that we took up changes at all is we are in a moment where we can react to the urgency of the moment in a way that provides full clarity for community members, for officers, for our law enforcement, and community members alike. I feel like in a lot of ways tonight, we are, that phrase of standing on the shoulders of giants, we're standing on the shoulders of people who have been working very hard on this issue to expand community safety for the people of Providence in all of the ways. And so we're talking about people who can come to the police and know that they can report a crime without worrying about what might happen to them, without worrying that they might not go home that night. We're talking about that, but we're also talking about making sure that there is a direct line of communication. There's real clarity on what is possible in terms of training. And we know what people, what recourse people have if their rights are not, if their rights are violated. And so what happened in 2017 was the culmination of decades of organizing. What is happening tonight is because, and I thank counselors Royas and Sanchez for bringing this forward, but it's also because of what we are hearing in the community, what we are seeing in the community, the conversations that we had just now about the resolution on the court is the same conversation that we're having here. So I am asking for the council's support. The substitutions are really addressing, at the hearing, several counselors shared concerns about expanding the liability. And so we just wanted to make crystal clear that that is not the case by eliminating any doubt that there might, it might be possible to, for organizations to get monetary damages in the case of violations. We just wanted to make that crystal clear. And that's all of my colleagues' support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Any further question? Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, Pro Tem Pichardo. I really don't have much more to add, other than just the gratitude and love. That's a word that I've been thinking about while we've been working on this subject for the past months at this point. To give credit to my colleague, Councilman Royas, he initially opened up this conversation back in February. And where we've seen happen from February, the beginning of our current president's term to where we're at now, is disgusting. It's heartbreaking. It has caused a lot of panic in our communities. All of our communities are very diverse, from the West Side to the South Side, to the East Side, to the North Side. Our, all of our communities are extremely diverse. So this is impacting everyone across the city at the end of the day. But what has happened and what we currently see on national TV and even local news, what we saw in July here in Providence, terms of enforcement and collaboration, what we saw this, this week of innocent driver being involved in an accident, thank God, there wasn't any kids crossing the street from Nathaniel Green or crossing guards on that intersection at that time, because it could have resulted in a much more tragedy. It is, what it comes down to is creating that trust and accountability mechanisms here in the city of Providence. And while it's clear and important to acknowledge that this alone isn't going to stop ICE officials from creating and continuing the barbaric actions that they have been doing, it's going to set a precedent on where the city of Providence lies in terms of what our values are as a city, not only as individual counselors, but as a city as a whole. It's been said from many elected officials the past couple of weeks, and including the mayor, that Providence is a welcoming city and we welcome everyone. It's, has a very diverse history, a lot of immigration, whether it was the Italians, Irish, to what we're seeing more today in more Latino communities migrate, is that our immigrant community at the end of the day is the backbone of our city, whether that was the case 100 years ago or today. We're a working-class, welcoming, diverse city, and that's what's before us today, is to put in city ordinances clear accountability mechanisms, like my colleague, Council President Miller, shared. There is now, hopefully, depending how the vote goes here shortly, going to be a mechanism for the people that we serve to hold us accountable. As elected officials, we are held accountable to the people that put us in these positions. So along that, you know, process, there's also going to be an avenue of accountability for either individuals, as that has always been the case since 2017. But now we're going to add organizations. And why it was very important to add these certain organizations is because what normally happens when someone is detained, transported to another facility, because that's what we're seeing, someone might be detained here in Providence, they're quickly transported to Louisiana, Texas, are certain examples that we've seen, and then sadly, usually after that deported. That individual in that specific case, you know, isn't thinking or doesn't have the resources to hold the city accountable if there was certain collaboration between the Providence Police. between the Providence Police Department and immigration officials. But now there's gonna be an avenue where organizations can hold the city accountable to our values, values that we all share. As the president mentioned, this is something that has been worked collaboratively with so many partners, locally, federally. We've been working with the mayor's office the past couple of days, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I believe he, he is very supportive of where we're at today on this ordinance. Because at the end of the day, that's what we all want, is to have a welcoming city, clear procedures and policies when it comes to our colleagues on the police department and immigration officials. At the end of the day, that's what we all want, is a safe, welcoming city, and for there to be accountability measures. So lastly, I just want to say thank you so much to my colleagues, our policy staff, everyone that has testified. And definitely, you know, want to uplift the families and in our communities that have been torn apart these past couple of months. Hopefully, you know, they see this later today or tomorrow and have a little bit more comfort knowing that their elected officials are listening, are paying attention, and are doing the most that we can from our platforms to protect and preserve the values that we all share here in the city of Providence. Thank you, Protem Pichardo.
Thank you, Councilman Sanchez. Councilman Spinal.
Yes, thank you, Council, Protem Pichardo. I rise in support. First of all, I want to thank the committee on ordinance. We sat here for close to four hours, and we heard dozens and dozens of testimonies. And they were well spoken and well said. So I'd like to thank Councilor Peterson, Councilwoman Harris, as well as Councilman Rodriguez. Councilman Royas, thank you so much for initiating this back in a number of months ago. You felt that it was needed then. Today is needed more than ever. We had a very interesting meeting, a very good meeting, and everybody had an opportunity to express themselves, including committee member. I had the, when it came to me, I abstained at that time because I needed clarification on one of the items that has been provided to me. So this is truly the culmination of true advocacy, as well as collaboration from all angle. I'm grateful to the staff and the policy team that put it together, to the administration, and to all of my colleagues in general. This is really what is needed today at this time. These amendments that we have touches upon all of the areas that need to be revisited in order to ensure that Providence continues to be a city that is welcoming to all. And I think these amendments accomplish that and assures that to all newcomers and to all those that live here, that prosper here, and that are raising their family here. So for that, I am extremely grateful. There was also concern that was raised, and that was also addressed. So again, this is great collaborative work, and I am just so proud and thrilled to be here and be part of this body, because we see something that is wrong, and we're not just walking by it, tossing it aside. We're actually meeting it head on and doing something about it. This body doing the most they can with what we have, and for that, I'm proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman John Gunkaus.
Thank you, Mr. Protem, and thank you for those remarks. Thank you to everyone who has spoken on this ordinance, and thank you to those who have put this forward, my colleagues, Councilor Royas and Sanchez, the ordinance committee, everyone who was a part of this effort. Trust between residents and law enforcement is built on fairness. And fairness is what we all value here, as you heard from Councilor Sanchez. These updates to the Community Relations Act make one thing crystal clear, and that is that our Providence Police Department is here to serve and to protect, not to act as agents for federal law enforcement. It is not our job to do ICE's job. And I think we need to be very crystal clear about that. As you heard from the council president, we're expanding the forms of ID residents can use. We're banning discrimination based on immigration status. And we're protecting our schools and our clinics, and we're ensuring that accountability and transparency are the rule and not the exception. I think what we have to take very seriously is that authoritarianism is at our doorstep. Just yesterday, in fact, we saw the reckless actions of ICE in our city. And as you alluded to, there are people who have, who could have been hurt in that situation. We're seeing governors across this country, whether it's Governor Gavin Newsom in California, or Governor Pritzker in Illinois, that are standing up to the fascism that we're seeing from the White House and the Trump administration. And we need to do the same here in the city of Providence. This is about making our city safe. And if we don't step up for the residents of our city, and I'm sure the residents of the east side will stand behind me when I say this, then who will? And if they continue to move the goalposts, then who will defend the people of our city? So for those who are pushing back against these kinds of ordinances, you need to look around, because it is at our doorstep. And we're here to protect the people of Providence and not fascist dictators. These changes come directly from the voices of our residents who have spoken up, people who love our city, people who need to know that their government stands with them, and we're gonna stand with our neighbors. And so with that being said, I'd like to thank so many people who are a part of this effort. We have Jennifer Wood from the Center for Justice, Juan Pablo Ocampo, if you guys can both stand, because I know that you were so instrumental in this process. And I think, yes, we should give them a round of applause. We've got Prism Arise, PSU, the Immigrant Coalition of Rhode Island Member Organizations, and there are far too many organizations here to list. But Providence has always been a city of immigrants. My mom immigrated here in the 1980s. That's who we are. And that's our strength. It's not our weakness. And with this vote, we're saying very, very clearly that our immigrant community, you belong here, you are seen, and you deserve protection from the residents of, the residents and elected officials in the city. We've got your back. And that's certainly the Providence I believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Graves.
I agree with everybody else. I was having a problem with whether or not I was gonna vote for this, only because of the language. I'm glad that you guys continue to negotiate and come up with something else. I just want to make sure that we are not villainizing the wrong people. As for the incident that happened in my ward, the police were there, and they did what they had to do. I saw the footage. There was no cooperation with ICE or anything like that. And I want to make sure that we don't group all of the police in the same manner. If someone does something wrong, you bring them to task. But if they haven't done anything wrong, we don't, I don't paint them all with the same paintbrush. I'm glad that we were able to clean up some of the language. But I think moving on, we need to start watching how we word things, and whether or not we needed some of these words. Because some of the stuff that we put in, to me, was just redundant. You guys know how I am about words. You know how I am about reading. And in this too, it says, may file a civil action for injunctive and declarative relief, as well as compensatory damages. That's really all you needed. It was already there. We just need to follow what's here. I don't think you really needed anything else. All the rest of this, I think, was fabulous. We definitely need something about the courts. I'm glad that the people came last week and brought that up. Because if we could do it during the pandemic, we can do it now. We definitely need people to stand up for the immigrants, because they've taken them off my side of town, like they've taken them off your side of town. But I just want us to be careful and also know, we're doing this, but we have no control over ICE running lights, if they're running these things, if they put up their sirens and everything, that has to go to a court. That has to be brought up. It's way above us. That's not something that we can do. I think we can go out like these fine people do and just keep voicing our opinion. We need to keep raising the issue and screaming and hollering. But they're a federal agency. So I want you to all realize that there's only so much that the city can do. But we will do as much as we possibly can. And I, and I really applaud my colleagues, because they worked hard. I'm very proud of one of our youngest ones for bringing it out here, Councilwoman Royas. And I will vote for this, because on the whole, I think it's a, it's a great plan. I think it's some, there are some clarifications. But like I said, when we start doing these things, we really need to listen to Aaron and Miguel and all of them, and see if some of the, some of the language that we're putting in, if it's really necessary. Because I don't want stuff to get bogged down. I don't want us to just put in a lot of pretty words that mean nothing. We need to go straight to the core of things and keep on doing it. And like I said, I will, I will vote for it because of our last minute adjustments. And, and also, please, let's not all vilify one group of people. Remember, we want our peace officers to be there for us. We want them to join the police academy. We want the people that, to join that are coming from our communities. They already know and see what's going on. If we keep getting them from our community, believe me, they will know. I have spoken to newbies that just came on. I have spoken to ones, the veterans that's been around. I have spoken to Mike and the Chiefs. So I always speak to everybody, to get everybody's point of view. And I think that's what we really need to do. So let's not vilify, but when they're wrong, hold their feet to the fire, like you hold our feet to the fire. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peterson.
Thank you, Protem. I couldn't agree with my colleague more. Thank you very much. Thank you, Protem, for allowing me to speak, allowing me the opportunity to speak on an ordinance that is critical to our community. Colleagues, I know that this has been perceived as being contentious in some ways. Concerns have been raised about liability, and some argue that limiting cooperation with federal immigration enforcement could actually interfere with police operations. I want to be, I want to offer a clear perspective that's grounded in trust, in rights, and in community responsibility. I support this policy as an immigrant to this country. I support this policy as a Providence resident, and I support this policy as a member of this legislative body. Across this country, we have witnessed people being taken while attending their court dates, abductions that violate constitutional rights and due process. U.S. immigration policy has historically shifted, yet our immigrants have consistently built this nation, and their contributions far outweigh any perceived cost. My duty in this seat is to protect all members of this community while ensuring our city upholds the rule of law. As a Providence resident, I have seen both the erosion of trust between police and community, and I've also seen the efforts of our public safety colleagues, our police, in trying to rebuild it. It takes one bad seed to spoil all the good work sometimes that is being done, to be able to uplift our communities. And I've watched it so many times, when our police have come out and supported our community in so many things. I know that I've witnessed it in my community, and I'm very appreciative of it. Our officers put on a uniform every day, and they face an uncertainty, and they still do show up to serve. But this ordinance clarifies that the Providence Police Department will act on immigration matters only when presented with a judicial warrant, preserving local focus on public safety, on human rights, and constitutional protections. What better time than now to find a way to build on that trust for our community? Let me be clear. Much opposition arises from assumptions about this ordinance that were simply incorrect. Officers obstructed protections and procedural safeguards, and our residents don't. What they do have is consistently being infringed upon and disregarded daily. What we are doing is not obstructing justice. It's ensuring that justice is applied fairly and consistently. Cooperation is provided when there is a judicial warrant. Nothing more and nothing less. Every resident should be concerned with safeguarding their constitutional rights, because if these rights are violated, for some, they're at risk for all. Some critics frame this as a financial issue, suggesting undocumented residents are a burden. What they omit is the economic contribution that is provided with little return, the taxes they pay, and the devastating consequences for families when their primary provider is detained. Humanity should be first. It should be our first guide, not personal preference dressed up as policy. We'd fight to support, we'd fight to support our community regardless of who is being harmed. Injustice harms us all, and when we compartmentalize, who can receive justice? We all lose. There is no double standard here. Dignity, safety, and equal treatment under the law must apply to all. This ordinance provides clarity, allowing officers to focus on their core responsibilities of public safety while upholding legal and constitutional obligations. The federal government is targeting cities that act with principles. But Providence must remain a city where every resident, regardless of status, can live free from unconstitutional intrusion. When we protect our people, history shows that we can create stability, prosperity, and growth for everyone. Lastly, and I say this as more of a personal note, as I've watched what's happening to, in my community, to my fellow immigrants, and to my fellow Americans in so many cases, I've actually tried really hard to lean into my Catholic faith. And it's reminded me, praying for the reminders of this faith that teach us to put humanity first, support those in need, and respect the dignity of every person. This ordinance, as I've come to see it, isn't about choosing sides. It's actually about choosing law, humanity, and trust. I really do hope, colleagues, that you'll stand with me in that choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Royas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin my remarks, I of course just want to say I support these amendments. And I want to thank the policy team behind me for making, for their hard work in making sure Providence stays grounded in fairness, justice, and the Constitution, even when the federal government loses its way these days. I just, you know, I think I rise tonight with urgency, because I think the facts on the ground, both locally and nationally, demand it. We've seen stories, if I may just pivot outside of Providence, we've seen horrific stories about ICE's, you know, abuse. Just several days ago, in Houston, Texas, a mother was selling fruit on a corner with her children, when her 15-year-old son, who has autism and the cognitive ability of a four-year-old, asked to use the bathroom. Minutes later, he was gone. ICE agents had taken him. The family spent days not knowing where he was until they learned he had been placed in a federal children's detention facility. No one told them. No one even thought to call. Imagine the terror of a mother who doesn't know where her child is, only to find out he's been locked in federal custody for days. Then in Chicago, a woman driving to work was slammed by an unmarked federal SUV. Then in Chicago, a woman driving to work was slammed by an unmarked federal SUV. Witnesses yelled, hit, and run as agents jumped out, dragged her out of the car by her legs, and detained her at gunpoint. She was a U.S. citizen, just cleared by her doctor to return to work after surgery. In New York City, ICE officers tackled a photo journalist filming a protest outside a courthouse, claiming she had assaulted them. They arrested her, cuffed her, and later released her with no charges because, what do you know, there was no assault. The only thing she was guilty of was recording their actions. In California, a U.S. Army veteran who served in the Iraq War, an American citizen on his way to work, to work security at a farm, was surrounded by ICE agents, teared gas in his car, and dragged out. He was detained for days, stripped, placed on suicide watch, and kept under 24-hour light in a cell. His family had no idea where he was. His ID was sitting in the car, they towed away. He told reporters later that the only thing he could think about while being locked up was seeing his kids again. And perhaps most haunting of all is what we saw in Chicago just days ago, a massive pre-dawn raid at South Shore Drive. Residents awoke to Black Hawk helicopters overhead, flashbangs, and hundreds of agents in combat gear storming their building. Doors were kicked in. Children were zip-tied on the sidewalk. Birth certificates of belongings were thrown into the hallway. Thirty-seven people were reportedly arrested, but many detained were U.S. citizens or lawful residents. The Department of Homeland Security called it a joint operation, but residents called what it was, a military-style assault on their neighborhood. This is what happens when a federal agency operates without restraint. This is what we mean when we say ICE is a rogue agency. And of course, Providence is not immune. Just this week, as you all know, on Chalkstone Ave, an unmarked ICE vehicle ran a red light with its lights on but no siren, struck another car, jumped a sidewalk, and snapped a telephone pole. Witnesses had said it was chasing another unmarked car through a city intersection. Back in July, ICE crashed into a suspect's car on Alverton Street, and Providence officers were found to have assisted them, violating both department policy and city ordinance. But the data holistically is also clear. As I mentioned at last week's ordinance committee meeting, according to the transactional records access clearinghouse, as of September 21, 2025, ICE held nearly 60,000 people in detention, and over 71% had no criminal conviction whatsoever. These are not hardened criminals. They are parents, workers, students, and neighbors. When people in our city, especially those who are undocumented, believe that calling 911 could bring immigration agents to their door, they stop calling. Crimes go unreported. Victims go unprotected. Predators roam free. That makes everyone of us less safe. The amendments before you tonight make this law enforceable. They spell out what cooperation means, so includes every indirect way law, local resources are pulled into immigration enforcement, like setting parameters, sharing data, offering staging space, or providing equipment. They prohibit the use of any city resources for federal immigration enforcement without a judicial warrant. They add protections against profiling based on immigration status or citizenship. They strengthen privacy safeguards and limit data sharing with outside agencies. They require that ICE warrants be verified by city personnel, and that any administrative subpoenas be reviewed by the city solicitor before compliance. And they empower the residents to take legal action if the city fails to follow its own law. And I want to also, before I conclude my remarks, just remind us that what we're doing tonight is constitutional. The Tenth Amendment's anti-commander-ing principle makes clear that the federal government cannot force local police to enforce federal law. Not our officers answer to Providence residents. I know that's a radical idea, but they don't answer to what happens in Washington. And our laws should reflect that. So the question that I think we have before us is, do we want a city where a mother can report abuse without worrying which badge shows up at her door, where a child can walk home from school without finding himself in the middle of a federal convoy, where our police are focused on protecting our residents and not enforcing civil immigration law? The record, both nationally and here, shows an agency operating with impunity, sweeping up citizens and non-citizens alike, and eroding trust in local enforcement. The old language, while I, you know, thought it was strong, and I value the contributions of what the community did in 2017, the landscape has changed, and I don't believe it's enough. So I think these amendments tonight give the CPRA clarity and power it needs to protect our residents, uphold the Constitution, and keep Providence safe. And so I urge you to pass these amendments tonight on first passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Vargas?
It's only the comments. People, it's easy, because all in here, we are immigrants for any way. So you born here or not, you have somebody in there. The only thing I want to say to you guys, I went to El Paso, Texas, to Juarez. In my heart, my eyes was cry. You know why? Because I see so many people, two or three buses, to cross the bridge to bring it to Juarez, Mexico. It's easy to say eyes. It's easy to say that you have your papers, but people that don't have the papers is your families. People that have not papers, maybe it's your neighbor. And the police, they have to protect the city. Because if I coming, you know how suitcase, you know how nothing, you know how your families, you only work like nothing, like garbage. It's not fair. This country is building with the immigrants to bring it. Before, it bring the Canadians to working to, you know, New York. So bring it in here for the factory, in one socket, to bring people to working. Those are the people that come here to working. So remember, we all are immigrants, all. The Indian is a like minimum, and you have to bring it to your papers. Because you know how the paper, you have to respect, because we all are immigrants. And it's very sad when you see two or three buses to bring it back. Where? Maybe you not belong Mexico, you belong somebody else. So it's good to you can go and see in Juarez and El Paso, Texas, to see the difference and see all the people can have nothing, not bring nothing, that cannot give nothing. This is only my comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris.
It's so many good things that's been said tonight. It's sort of hard to just pick up and start talking. But, Councilwoman, I want you to know I'm not an immigrant. My people and our ancestors were stolen. They were stolen, they were brought here. So that's my passion towards the people that's being chased around today. I think back of my generation of people and the roots of this country and the history of this country. I don't ever want to forget that history, because I would love to know what, I would have loved to kept my language. I would have loved to kept my culture wherever I was stolen from. I would have loved to continue to build like I see so many great immigrants doing in this country today, based on the fact that their culture and everything else that they were allowed. The reason I enjoy so much Thai and Spanish, you name it, food, Greek, you name it, is because it's culture, and it was allowed to be here. Never mind all of that. That's a different story for a different time. I'm standing today because I want you to know how proud I was of not only the people who showed up. I stayed awake. I was surprised at myself. I stayed awake during that whole thing. The people of Providence standing together and talking about how we, as neighbors and as people, will not tolerate the misuse of the federal agents who have came here. By the way, federal money disappears just like everything else. The work that we have done in the city of Providence, same people that were sitting in the audience, same people who, for years, have held our Providence Police accountable, accountable in a way that we, to me, have one of the best police departments there is. And I'm going to say that out loud because I seen, I was with most of the work that were being done to make changes. And the same people are still here. This started long before 2017. 2017, it just happened to make it through because I came out of that crowd. And that crowd came back, that group, that masses of people came back and said, no, this has to be put in a law. So when Councilwoman Royas seen that that needed amendment after all of that time, they done the work, but it's up to us in our position to continue to do what's best for our people. I alone, in my ward, I served undocumented people, and I knew they are undocumented. I love them just as much as I do my neighbors, everybody else, because we all bring something to the table, we all are one, you know, in our community. And I seen that. I seen that when with the testimonies. I seen Providence, Rhode Island being one, and that is beautiful. What other place can you go where people unite? It was all walks of life. It was generations. I sit there and I witness all of that. And to me, that made me proud to be a part of something big. I want you to know that this ordinance with amendments and all unties our chief hand. Come on now, we got a good chief. We got a great chief. Chief Perez have been doing an amazing job, have been able to send the right people. I say that to say that when I got here, I didn't trust no police. I didn't. But what happened was, the police started to work with us in our neighborhoods, sent us really smart people who come to the table and also help implement change at the table with our neighbors. They built trust. South Providence finally got trust. South Providence's neighbors finally got trust in the police that is on the department right now that is in our neighborhoods, that go to our events, that serving our different capacities of things that we do as council people. We can't go backwards for this federal stuff that's going to disappear with all the other stuff that goes when it goes. Dollars, the federal dollars that's being put into this entity that have came, should not ever change what we have built as Providence, as a people, not just politicians, but the people rooted together. And that's what made it so beautiful. The other night, hearing a community stand together, stood together. I appreciate the amendments because the amendments brought everybody together, everybody in collaboration, people that didn't even believe, like, of course, you're going to have some that say, oh, this is not what we need for our police department. You're going to hear that. But you're going to hear a lot of them that say, we are doing our work for our constituents here. If we do show up at a neighbor's house or someone's house that is undocumented, we don't want them to be afraid not to open the door because they think ICE is right next door to us or right next to us. We want that kind of image here. That's what we want. That's why we work so hard as a unit to make sure that we're doing the best we can to support as many people as we can when we can. And I think this is really wonderful. I appreciate you. I appreciate you guys for just like, this is a time, this is a time to do it now. We hear crazy going on. We hear it. We hear it. We hear that federal money eventually going to cause them to do their job more than what they should. Because dollars say one thing. But when those dollars leave, is it going to leave us with distrust? Is it going to leave us having to go backwards? I've been in this game too long to have to keep repeating things, and I feel like this is a repeat of history, a repeat of stuff that we, at one point as a community group, had to create our own hot watch. That's what we called it. And we would show up at people's houses, get phone calls, 3:00 in the morning, whatever, 12, 2:00, and we all jump in our gear and go and support that person that needed support, most likely undocumented. So it's a lot that's been going on, but a lot have changed, and we don't want to have to go backwards. We don't want to have to go backwards. This is great. This is a beginning of saying that we all stand together, we untie our chief's hands, because now it's not mandatory that he run right out or send his officers out to assist. It's not mandatory. It wasn't all alone. It's already written there. But that gives us even more, even more power to say that, no, you don't suppose to do that, because it's already written, it's already been amended. So I want to appreciate all the work went in this. I want to appreciate the conversations even after the ordinance committee. I voted out of the ordinance committee simply because I wanted to make it to the floor. I wanted to hear. I wanted that debate. I wanted that debate to take place in between, too, where people were not on the same page, but, you know, becoming, because it's a conversation that has to be had. So again, I want to appreciate all of Providence's neighbors, our politicians, and our police, everything that's great about Providence. I appreciate it, except the federal agents. They got to go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Just wanted to say that for clarification, there was a question from President Miller to the city solicitor, and if there was any clarification or any question, he said no. So I just want to make sure for the record that there was no further question. The other for me is I reiterate what my colleagues have said. In our local communities, we got to stop separating families. We got to protect our communities. And as Mary Kay Harris, this is about the people. And I'm glad that people came to the table to discuss, to disagree, and as it has been highlighted, many of the advocates and many of you who came out for four hours to speak. All right, so I'll finish out this. Thank you for being here, especially also the president of the Providence Police Union. So with that said, I was just informed that I cannot speak too long here, but great. Thank you. So with that said, with no further discussion, as amended, it is before us. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll call as amended?
Council President Miller. Aye. Deputy Majority Whip Vander Bois.
Aye.
Majority Leader Espinal.
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Councilwoman Peterson.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye.
Councilor Royas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas.
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Aye.
You have 13 ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matter is passed for the first time on a roll call vote as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call back President Miller.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 13 and 14, pass on a voice vote, and refer back to the Borough Contract and Supply.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 13 and 14? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 15.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 15 and pass for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on item 15? Councilman Vargas? Councilman Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I rise with not a strong opposition to this ordinance. I think the intention of it is well-intended. I do have a concern about it, kind of a question. Should I direct that to you or the sponsor?
You can direct the question to me, and then we'll let the sponsor answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So the intention, I believe, is to, you know, make sure there's some type of accountability and enforcement mechanism when it comes to folks leaving the trash barrels outside past pick- folks leaving the trash barrels outside past pickup day. It's an issue that happens in all of our neighborhoods. As we're all aware, our city is 60-plus percent renters. So there is a lot of rental properties. So what does that mean? There's a lot of landlords. And as we know, with all the concerns and complaints that we get, there's a lot of absentee landlords, a lot of landlords that aren't responsible. Of course, I definitely, you know, want to acknowledge that there is a lot of responsible and attentive and engaged landlords. But my concern with, as written in this ordinance, is at the end of the day, the city and the landlord go through this process, keep fining the landlord. The landlord doesn't pay the fines. There is language in here that says that the city may remove the trash barrels. And I believe that is intended. The sponsor can correct me if I'm reading it wrong to put an end to the behavior, which I think there should be some type of end to the behavior. My concern is, as written, is that that would leave a lot of tenants that might have a landlord that's not engaged with the punitive fines without a trash barrel. So that kind of makes me question a kind of unintended consequence to someone that's renting. Of course, you could say or have the perception that, you know, as a tenant, you would be hammering your landlord, blowing up their phones to figure out what is going on. But as I've seen with current experiences, sometimes I have neighbors that are renters that no matter what they do, they don't get a response from their landlord. So my question or concern is, are we kind of creating a system here that might leave a renter without a trash barrel for their trash or recycling? So that is a concern of mine as I have read this ordinance as written.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Sponsor, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Yes, you, in some parts, you're correct. But the responsible in this ordinance, not the tenants, is the property owner. According to the ordinance, it's going to be getting four times. The idea is to cite the property four times. By the four times, if the property owner doesn't find out, doesn't respond, we will, DPW will send a notified letter to the owner of this property. In the meantime, the tenants still putting the trash out and the bins. The issue that we have is that they leaving the trash, I'm sorry, the bins in the sidewalk where we have wheelchairs. We've got little kids going to school and they don't remove them. It's more dangerous for a little kid to get hit by a car because he's avoiding the car and the sidewalk. But we giving a lot of time to the property owner. When the first citation goes out, will take a month. The second will take another month. The third will take another month. So we talking about almost six months period for this property owner to act. When the letters, when the letter will go out saying, look, if you don't remove this or fix this issue about your trash carts out of the sidewalk, we might remove the carts. We might. So that decision will be made by DPW Director. And that will be the solution. But that will take at least six to eight months as a process. We're not taking the trash out in the second month. The idea is to send a message that this ordinance is in place. It's like when you take the trash out, the ordinance is after 3:30 p.m. And then when the truck goes by and pick up the trash, you have 72 hours to bring it back. And that's why we trying to give more teeth to DPW to correct this problem.
Further discussion? Councilman Royas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, from my colleague to my left, I just, I think the key word in this ordinance is "may." And so I think I just want to reinforce that they may take the barrels, but it's at the full discretion of DPW. Thank you.
Counselor Anderbois.
Thank you so much. And this is minor, but I think I just share my colleague Miguel, our Councilor Sanchez's concerns and that the consequence is being put on the tenants and not on the person or like the landlords. They won't be feeling that consequence if they lose their trash. And I know in my neighborhood, we have problems with rats in parts of my neighborhood. And I'd be worried if DPW did end up taking away someone's trash bin because a landlord was negligent and those folks were without trash. I just wouldn't want there to be a rat problem for other neighbors who then don't have access to trash bins. So I love the intent of this, totally agree with it. I don't want kids running out into the street to avoid that. I just want to make sure that we're putting the onus on the right person and on the right people and not harming, either creating more rat problems or like harming renters.
Further discussion? Councilman Sanchez? Any further discussion before Councilman Sanchez speaks again? Councilman Espinal.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't see any confusion in this. I think it's pretty clear. I think that there are consequences already written here. If you don't bring your barrels in, I don't know the exact amount, but there is a fine. So this goes to the land, to the homeowners that have a habit of not bringing those in. And they do sit on sidewalks for many days, weeks, and people cannot access the sidewalk, especially those are a handicap. Now, if those are not brought in, they will be cited. But it goes on and on and on. Sometimes they don't even pay the fines. So what the proposal that Councilman Vargas is doing is actually to begin a conversation between the DPW and also the homeowners. And the key is, as Councilman Roya says, it may remove the bins. I mean, you cannot run a business without having the tools that you need. I'm not sure that you can own a house without having a container where the tenants could put the garbage in. So, and there are further consequences when it comes to that because if your containers, your bins are removed and the tenants are piling up the garbage in the backyard or on the side yard or wherever, I mean, that increases to like $500 per ticket. So it's a positive legislation that begins a conversation about something that is happening, but that it could be addressed to simple communications between DPW and the owner. So I think it's a plus and I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. If you'd just give me a minute. I also have a question for the sponsor on this one. What would a renter do if they had no trash can and a landlord who was not being responsive to them or to the city? What would the renter do with their trash?
That's a process in place. That's why they going to get four times evocation. And the last time will be a letter sent to the owner before they take action to remove. DPW will have to contact the owner to start the process to remove the bins. Then DPW is not going to remove the bins until they got in touch with the property owner. That's why we put a word there, "may," because before we say "shall," but now we saying "may" is because we giving the little window to DPW to get in touch with the property owner, know where he is. He will have at least eight months to fix, to correct this problem.
And if the landlord does not respond, which happens, right? I can tell a story, but I'm not going to his chair. But I just want an answer to the question. If the landlord never responds to a letter, maybe they received it, maybe they moved and the city doesn't have an address, what happens to the renter who needs to put their trash somewhere?
Will be the concern of DPW to give them plastic bags.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Councilman Goncalves.
Thank you, Madam President. I can hear the concerns from folks on this. I do think that, sure, there are a lot of tenants in the city that we certainly wouldn't want to not have a trash bin. But the mechanisms that are put in place here, so the ability to reach out to them four times, but also the fee that's $500 that would double in 14 days, I would hope to God that that would prompt a landlord to be more responsive. And so I do think that the language change too, from "shall" to "may," allows it to be more flexible. And I think to the councilperson's point, will allow us to enforce in a way that's more effective than what's currently on the books. Now, I understand that the concern of a tenant who doesn't have a trash bin no longer accessible or readily available. But I do think by passing this ordinance, we're going to be addressing a longstanding problem that we're experiencing with some of our landlords not being responsive. And I think this streamlines that process, but also provides the mechanism to hold them accountable. So I do urge passage on this. I think this is a good ordinance. It's a step in the right direction. I understand the concerns about tenants. But I would hope that because of the provisions in this ordinance to hold landlords accountable, we'd get the results that we're looking for. And I want to thank the councilman for his leadership on this.
Further discussion? Item 15. Councilwoman Peterson.
Thank you. Just a quick clarifying question for the sponsor. Please forgive me if this was made readily available and I did not, and I missed it. Is there interaction and communication that's going to be happening between DPW and DIS if there is a said potential issue here?
Councilman Vargas.
Thank you. No, we don't. This is only between DPW and the property owner. The DI, oh, I'm sorry, the Department of Inspection doesn't have anything to do because it's not a code enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I have to tell you that I can appreciate an ordinance like this. There's notorious members of my community that all have multiple properties that continuously are getting, we get reports of them just not abiding by the ordinance. So I actually, I welcome an opportunity like this. If I'm being fair to my community, I would say that, and this is not to hinder any sort of tenants or renters in the city, but I think that the extensive process of six to eight months is actually really long. And I think that that's not something in my particular community when this has been an ongoing problem. I just can see my neighbor saying, well, why is this process taking too long? But that's just a personal opinion. I actually am going to be supporting this. But I do, I did want to ask because the question that I had asked was more so if there's communication being involved between the two city departments, if there's an opportunity to bring some of these potential violations to the table at a sooner, at a quicker response time than the eight-month period? That was the reason why I asked. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to clearly, quickly make clear that I do support the intention of it. I think this is something that is needed. I don't have any issue with fining the landlord. I just still have the concern that there is absolutely no clear next step or explanation or protection for a tenant with what to do with their garbage if they don't have a trash barrel. What I foresee happening is they would put it on the sidewalk and it brings us back to point A of this exact same issue.
Further discussion? Councilman Royas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, on this topic, I wanted to publicly share that there was at least two examples I could provide in my neighborhood where there were multifamily homes in which the renters were struggling to bring in their trash bins. And the trash bins were on the sidewalk 24/7. And the DPW internally at the time had sent out warning letters, citations. It was a long drawn-out process. And they did, as a last resort, take the trash bins away. And what happened was, and I recognize in this scenario that I'm laying out, the onus was still shifted on the renter. But what happened was the renters recognized that the trash bins weren't there and they had to pretty much harass the property owner to respond to DPW to get those trash bins back. Now, what happened from that was that the trash bins never made it on the sidewalk past the trash collection day. But that, I recognize that to be a very heavy-handed manner. As I, as it may have been successful, I guess, depending on who you ask, but the trash bins are no longer on that sidewalk. But what I'm concerned about is, could there be a scenario? And my feeling is that, and I say this to the sponsor, that my feeling is that there could be a scenario that I haven't experienced where the city could remove those trash bins and renters never make contact with the owner. And so they're left with nowhere to put their trash. So that's what I'm concerned most with. I've had, however you define success, I had success with this with a similar internal policy from DPW doing exactly this. But I worry about the communication between the renter and the property owner. And what if the property owner just doesn't respond? And we have several landlords in the city that are hard to get in touch with. In part, we have, because we have a rental registry that is not enforced. But that's another day. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further, Councilman Espinal.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to add that, you know, I actually didn't think that this was going to take this long. It's pretty simple, common sense. This opens up a general communication that should exist between DPW and homeowners. The amendment that came in with the word "may," actually, we had a wonderful DPW department that showed up and testified. And some of the language came from them because the intention here is not to remove barrels and make sure that the garbage half goes all over the place. So I trust that the DPW department is going to carry this legislation with responsibility and that they are going to make connections. They are going to make contact with the property owner before an action like this is taken. So let's just trust that department. Thank you.
Councilwoman Peterson.
Thank you. Just as a quick follow-up, and I appreciate you, my colleague, saying that I think this is just me expressing personally how I think the property manager ordinance that we passed a little while ago would be a perfect opportunity and a perfect venue for us to be able to capture a lot of information so that we can actually get some of these owners to be doing the work that they need to
some of these owners to be doing the work that they need to, to support their tenants and their, and their renters. So I'm hoping that our city departments actually take the initiative and do the work to make sure that they get that working for us. Thank you.
Counselwoman Harris.
Mine is, it's a quick question. I guess mine is, does, does this mean that the property owners get away with the fees that we said that folks should be paying, and that we should be more vigilant about collecting those fees in order for our revenue not to be so complicated around budget time? Does that mean they get off the hook for the fees that should be coming to them for not doing whatever, because it's already in the past ordinance that there's a fee that they owe when they not removing their trash? It's just a question, I don't know.
I can answer for you, the fees are to the property owner, yes, the fines and fees are to the property owner. Further?
One question, I'm sorry for clarification, if the barrels are removed, does that mean that they no longer are responsible for fees?
No, I believe they have to pay the fees to get their barrels back. Further discussion? Any, sponsor, any further comments? Okay.
The guy, I mean, hey, thank you very much, Madam President. Like, what I'm saying, we propose this kind of ordinance to have a, a better city, a cleaner city. We understand that tenants, the tenants pay rent, but somehow they had, they get in touch with the, with the property owner. As soon as they see something on the mail, they will call the property owners, because they, they don't want to pay the fee. So it's, it's a good ordinance, yes, to, it's a process, it's eight months, we not taking the barrels tomorrow, it's a process. I, I ask every colleague to, to please support this one, it's, it's a beginning of conversation to have a cleaner city. Thank you.
Counselwoman Ryan.
Madam President, thank you so much. Thank you, Counselman Vargas, for putting forth this ordinance. It does make sense, and essentially what it really does is codify a process that we follow today. It gives a little longer time to bring everybody into compliance. We all have a problem with barrels that are left out and cause issues for pedestrian travel on our sidewalks, on, as well as it's just unsightly. So I support this ordinance, and again, as we heard testimony from our colleague this evening, and I've experienced it as well, that's what happens, that's how DPW gets people to pay attention. They threaten the, that they will take the barrels away. Nobody wants to do that, and they give as long as they possibly can to try to bring them into compliance. They're not waiving fees, thank you, Councilwoman Harris, for being concerned about those fees, but it codifies a process, it codifies a process, and it's dependable and it's predictable, and I support it.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item 15? Counts going once, going twice? Alright, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel President Miller. Aye. Deputy Majority Whip Anderbois.
No.
Majority Leader Espinal.
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris. Councilwoman Peterson.
Aye.
Counsel President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye.
Councilor Royas.
Nay.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez.
Nay.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas.
Aye.
Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Aye.
You have 10 ayes, three nays, one absent. The motion carries, the matter is passed for the first time on a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 16.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 16 and pass on a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on item 16? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 17.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 17 through 20.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on items 17 through 20? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item 17 to the Committee on Public Works. Note, item 18 as received, 19 to claims and pending suits, and 20 as received.
So noted.
Item 21.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 21 and pass on a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on item 21? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Majority Leader.
Being that there is no further business, our motion to adjourn, and tonight we're doing it in the name of Sandro Mastanza, who recently passed away.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.